That's how I ended up at that meeting.
It's not.
It's not.
It's not.
It's not.
Exactly.
The head over.
It's showing up.
Go check this out.
Going down.
We have strong.
Down.
We got.
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 Yeah.
We're making long use of.
To the relationship.
You got a lot of work to go.
You got.
You got.
No.
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 Sure.
No.
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 Relationships.
Relationships.
She asked.
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 Quiet, please.
Quiet, please.
Wait, have you all planned for the last one here, please?
What the back here?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God, I didn't even recognize. Do you get your hair cut?
I'm going to amend the agenda on good faith for Idaho Code 74-204C to have number eight, the recall election removed. I know it was brought up by a council member. However, it does not pertain to official city business and according to Association of Idaho Cities, it should be removed. You guys vote.
I can see.
You'd welcome to the governor's committee.
This is why I didn't get through the other stuff.
Yeah. The bills.
The agenda.
The bill.
The bill.
The bill.
The bill.
The bill.
The bill.
I'll make a motion in September 10th and September 17th and September 26th.
I move to approve the payables for the month of September.
I sent you a link, so I know.
I'll text you.
Now you can.
Still here.
There's just.
You want one at a time?
No, you do.
We'll be together.
Together.
I don't have to move.
Are you there?
Right here.
How am I doing?
Don't get his.
Okay, I'm aware that you will support the Constitution of the United States and continue of the United States, the state of Idaho, and do faithfully discharge the duty of the city clerk, city treasurer, of the city of Juliette according to the rest of your ability.
Can you get hold of us? We'll have your hand.
I do.
I'm so glad to hear that you're making these decisions in your life. There's a lot of people.
I shall. Boy. So. Penis.
What's the account? What are the accounts that we have that is not credit? Those that's going to be joint, it's for the county accounts. What accounts do we have, sir?
So, we have a, it's for the library. It hasn't, nothing has been done since like 1971. So in order to get things kind of cleaned up by, with the bank, they want to make it a joint ownership. So the minutes need to reflect that Dick and I will be joint on the account. And then we will need to remove all the owners' letters because it dates way back. So we'll just need to have the minutes reflect that and we'll have to be cleaned up.
I move to approve Cindy and Dick as joint owners on the Leta credit union account and remove prior sinners. Library District, you're up.
Hello. So we came to make an introduction to myself. They roll her in as I'm the new Library District Director and I wanted to introduce myself to the city council so I didn't get to know you guys, you didn't get to know us. Annette Cimantel and Wayne Smith are with me from the board and Annette has some other things that she would like to say.
So we, first of all, wanted to acknowledge the tools working relationship we've had with the city. We've been a wonderful host of our library and as you know, for a very long time, we've been, jointly have been concerned about the state of the building of the library and we've been looking for other options in Juliette and we've made, it's, you all have a very long and difficult history of that. We just got a estimate worth electrical repair for $25,000 and so the costs of updating it for what's really an inadequate space are just being overwhelming and we have identified property in Hendrick that we are proceeding with due diligence on and we just didn't want to blind side you. We feel like you're our partners and we wanted to let you know that that's happening and that, and so we haven't done inspections yet, but we're hopeful that that will be a good replacement for that library and we will keep you posted, but I did want to let you know before we proceed.
That's exciting.
Thank you.
We're going to be excited to see you go, but yeah, I know I was on the library board with trying to find the building down here. It was, it had its challenges.
Yes, you did so much work and we so appreciate that, but.
So I'm glad to see that you guys are getting a nice building.
And we hope that it will be for both communities as this one has been. So anyway, that was the presentation and if you have any questions for us, we'll reach out and we will keep you posted on what happens as soon as we can. So thank you.
I just want to say, not your fault. I think it sucks that we're going to lose it to Kendrick actually. It sucks bad. I think we could do better.
Yeah, we've thought about that and too, we've tried really hard to identify a spot and make offers here and then cost of retrofitting it to carry the weight of books ended up being really too much because we really wanted to keep it there too. So I totally.
I know you guys fought for it and you've done what you can. It's just, it's really painful. Kendrick makes $10,000 more per household than Juliette and we're basically, if you look at our businesses, we're going down a drain and I hate to see that we're actually going to lose a library to Kendrick too.
Well, we would be happy to stay in touch with you about rates and we don't need library services to.
Well, thank you.
Thank you and thank you for all you've done for us. And I did wish to look out so there's more room for books to sell. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair, if you'd be right up on the chair.
You're up, Tom.
Thank you. My name is Tom Lamar, Lake County Commissioner. There are three Latont County Commissioners and all three of us are taking the time to go around and visit all the various communities in Latont County this month. We have met with City Moscow, Bowville, and your number three in the line of the various communities we're talking to. The, what we're, what we're talking about right now is how the formation of a housing authority, which counties are authorized to do under, I feel like I'm. I'm sorry about that. I'll try to make my, make it, make myself a little. So under Idaho Code Title 31, Chapter 42, counties in the state of Idaho are authorized to form housing authorities if certain conditions are met with housing. And there's references within the code towards safe and sanitary, sanitary housing, presence of, and then also the presence or lack of affordable housing. And so we're concerned that throughout Latont County, but not only, I mean really this is a national issue. It's a statewide issue of the lack of affordable housing. And we feel that one of the things that we should do as a responsibility, as the government, you know, the Latont County government is to do whatever we possibly can to help improve the housing situation within our county. There are 10 housing authorities that currently exist within the state of Idaho. Some of them are joint between cities and counties. So like, for example, Ada County is, has a joint housing authority with the city of Boise. In Teton County, they do joint work with Driggs and Victor and Tetonia to help improve housing in that, in that county. And we would like to form a housing authority within Latont County. And it's likely that it would be a joint resolution with the city of Moscow here to are appointing people that would be then ultimately part of this housing authority. A housing authority is actually a separate entity from the government of Latont County and Latont County can't tell them what to do, but we can get it started and then they can go and, and work on that issue of housing. And then we would be appointing people and one of the things that we would like to hear from the various communities around Latont County is who would like to be part of that committee. Other, I, I sent in advance a couple of documents. One is just this overview that I'm referencing. I also sent a sample draft letter that the city of Juliette might choose to write if it would like to, that would be in support of this effort or might suggest ideas. Some of the ways that cities around the state of Idaho have helped with housing authority formation is say figuring out like, hey, there's this piece of land that we've got in town that I think would be really good for potentially putting houses on it and we could make it available one way or the other to a housing authority to, to encourage developers to build on that land. So, you know, it's, it's a way to help make the costs come down in housing. We all know material costs are very high, labor costs are very high and one of the ways that we've seen that cities and counties can help is by making land available. It's one of the steps that, that's possible. We have been working very closely with Paul Kimmel at Vista Utilities, Sojourners Alliance, the Moscow Affordable Housing Task Force and others, other organizations to help work on this issue. And we're about at the place where we want to move forward with the resolution, but before we do that, we just wanted to go visit all of the communities and then just talk about it and hear back whatever ideas people might have about, well, this would work really well in our community or, you know, make sure you don't do this or do more of that or whatever it might be. And, you know, rather than, well, we, we have a number of examples of that water and sewer situations for private developments outside of city limits. And what we've discovered is it's a lot safer to provide housing in places where people can, or those people developing houses can take advantage of water and sewer systems, transportation systems and so forth that already exist in cities. It's a lot more financially responsible and so that's, that's the direction we're moving in general on this. Just a quick presentation about what we're looking at. The document that I sent has a few links of, you know, towards the Idaho Code, towards some examples of housing authorities that exist already in Idaho and so, and then just the sample document for, a sample idea. But I'm available. You all have any questions or ideas?
Tom, I have a question. I work with housing authority in Mason. I manage a property here that accepts the Section 8 housing vouchers that go with you no matter what state you live in.
Yep.
Now, in your program that you're wanting to put together, is this the type of housing voucher that stays with that particular building? So like it's income-based rent, discount for that particular property? Is that what you're doing? Did you say this is not state, this is something separate?
Yeah, so the, a housing authority is actually an organization. So we're working on creating the organization that would be working to develop that housing. That could then accept the house, those vouchers that we're talking about. So it's, we're not issuing any vouchers or anything like that. We're working to be an entity that will be totally focused on housing throughout Latont County.
When you say housing, you mean apartments?
It can be, yeah, could be, or twin homes or whatever. You know, each community is going to have different ideas about what we're discussing.
And you said earlier you needed land.
That's a, that's a possibility.
How do you acquire that? How are you acquiring your land?
Well, it would be land to, for the housing authority to then, it's not to Latont County. We, we're not trying to receive any land. It would be the housing authority that would be working with developers on whatever that land is, if that's, if that's what people have to offer. You know, sometimes it's like the folks that say, hey, you know, this, our community has, you know, a half hour, a half acre lot or an acre lot next to the well property and we can go ahead and make that, you know, that kind of thing. So I, it depends on what, in the, in this case, what Juliette might or might not want to do with that. But, you know, some communities might have land available, others might not, but maybe, you know, another idea is development permits to, you know, helping developers by waiving fees or doing something to help make it more affordable for them to develop homes. The whole idea is try to bring the prices down so that we can have units that are more competitive for people that can't afford, you know, even the mean, average home cost.
Is this program also for cities or are you just targeting rural areas?
No, well, it's, we're, we're setting up, the idea is to set up a housing authority so that within the county, they can work on a lot of different ideas. So it could be, it could be in cities, it could be in rural areas. I'm just suggesting that it's a lot more efficient for building homes in areas where sewer systems exist already or water systems exist and where there are already streets because it's really expensive to build street and water systems. And, you know, we've seen a lot of examples of water and sewer systems that failed.
Is, is refurbishing some of these empty commercial buildings on the radar of the housing authorities?
It's definitely a possibility. You know, different housing authorities have done that.
So what would you need from like the city of Juliette?
Right now, just, hey, yeah, that's a great idea. Let's, let's move forward. I mean, a letter, the draft letter I suggested is really just, we like the idea of a housing authority and we'd like to see that happen in Latont County because here's, here's the situation that we have with housing. So, I mean, you could give us examples, you could say, this works, this doesn't work.
This is going to be a taxing authority again?
No, they can't let me taxes.
So how are we going to be paying for their like clerical staff and?
Well, in some places, they've received very generous donations from individuals or corporations that have said.
And then what they're meant to do is to facilitate the development of different places by independent developers, by cutting costs that basically, so independent developers will own the building or sell the building?
Well, the ownership is variable in different places. There are certain rules that.
Well, it won't be the authority that will own it, correct?
What's that?
The authority will not be owning it.
There's a, they, they could, but they might, they might only own the land, but not necessarily the units. It might be that they're available.
If they own the land, where are they getting the money from? Donations?
George Soros.
Yeah.
Well, they, it could. A town or a city or an individual could donate land to them and then they would own that land if they received it. And so that's one. And then various, various housing authorities have received donations or grants to help make that work possible. But there are people that are very generous with, you know, wanting to see the housing problem fixed in the United States and they are making donations to make that possible. So, but you need to have a vehicle in order for those donations to happen. So that's, that's the, that's the idea behind the formation of the authority.
I think there's definitely a lot of room for improvement in the cities.
Yeah.
But turning rural towns into larger cities seems a little, I don't know, a little barbie's to myself, you know?
I, I'm not suggesting return Juliette into life city.
Would it be a place you stashed maybe refugees or illegal immigrants?
I don't think that's the point. I think the point is that there are people that would like to perhaps.
Would like to make that happen.
Sure, there's, that's the.
There's also a lot of money going into that as well.
Yeah.
I got a question. So who, who would determine who lived there?
Well, the housing authority can figure out lots of different ways to make it possible. So like.
You'd make the rules then?
Well, there's, there's, so let me give an example. In, in, in Driggs, Idaho, which is where, it's in Teton County, they donated land to the housing authority with the understanding that they would build homes for people who worked for Teton County. So sheriff deputies, maintenance workers, clerical staff in the courthouse. So they would, they gave land for the point of having apartments where people can live that work for the city. So they, they, a certain number of units. So they kind of allowed it to be like that. So they can, they can make it work in any number of different ways.
But the housing authority is the ultimate decider, right?
Well, they, they're, they can make those decisions, but they might not have, they might not adopt any restrictions.
If not then, then who's going to make the determination?
Well, if they, if they're, if they're working with a developer to build the land, then that's, it's, it's all the folks that are involved.
What would that do to the landlord's property values?
Which?
If you're bringing in a bunch of low cows, low income housing or low, low housing, what would it do to us homeowners here? What would it do to the values of our homes?
Well, it probably depends on the, the kinds of homes that are built and the value of the home that's, you know, the, the home that's built will have its house, its value assessed by the assessor and that is oftentimes, oftentimes does not have any impact on the neighboring lands. So the, the, the property that, in talking with the assessor, they are very clear about looking specifically at the home that, that's being assessed.
So in all fairness, Tom, because you've been our commissioner a long time, it's not just the low income that needs housing at this juncture in our economy. However, I hope you hear what we're saying.
Well, affordable housing right now is, is a huge issue. And, and it's, it's like two, $300,000, $1,000 homes. Right. Are, I mean, it's, it's very difficult right now with the median home price being as high as it is. Yeah. And in the state.
I want to do anything I can or the city can to help you find housing options, but I just hope you hear what we're saying.
No.
Who could move in there and who couldn't?
Well, it, I'm, I'm not setting any rules about.
The concerns of the residents.
I'm not setting any rules about who lives in it, who doesn't. It's entirely up to how, you know, what's, what's being made available. I mean, the whole point of affordable housing efforts is because of stories that we hear from people who are trying to get jobs as police officers, as clerical workers, as maintenance workers, as road workers, people that live in our communities right now. Right. That can't afford to live there. Right. And that's what we're working on, is to try to make this place better for the people who are already living there. And that's, that's the whole point. Does that make sense? Okay. So that's what, that's what we're doing right now. So I appreciate it. Yeah.
Tom, I have one last question.
Yep.
Is this being brought to other rural towns?
Yeah, yeah, I started by saying that. So we're visiting with all the communities.
And this is other states as well, not just Idaho?
Oh, we, well, there are, there's, there's work on housing, improving housing all over the United States because a lot of people are saying they're not able to afford our homes. And so, you know, we want to, or we aren't able to buy a home or renting, we would like to buy, you know, there are a lot of people that would like to change where they live, they would like to improve it, whatever it might be, so.
Can I ask one more question?
So have, in this study, has, have you looked into the percentage of, in these small towns, especially Latont County, of renters versus homeowners and people who can build equity and people who are really hemorrhaging a disproportionate amount of their income on rent? Have we looked at those kind of numbers and maybe that's where we could look at possibly improving the options for housing and building that?
Yeah, I mean, every community is different, right? And so the Inland Northwest Partners led by Paul Kimmel has had a number of different housing studies within the area. Okay. And so that's what, yeah, I mean, Paul Kimmel was a good person to ask about this. The Partnership for Economic Prosperity that I just did a few years ago, did a study on housing within Latont County. Okay. So there are a lot of good examples of what people are saying in terms of their concerns. Some people's concerns are, I'm not able to build equity, I can't buy, I would like to buy, I'm only financing right now, I would like to do something different. Other people are saying, there's not anything, there's not something available, I would like to see more options available. So we're basically, basically just helping people, give people choices when they can't afford to get into a home, whether it's an apartment or a house or whatever it might be. And it's, I mean, you know, we are, we, the community, this whole area is able to do some work on housing. We're seeing, we're seeing folks like Habitat for Humanity building homes, but they're building one a year. And, you know, that's great for that one family, but we are really trying to help make this a little bit more of an effort where we're, you know, helping make something more viable for more people. So that's, that's the effort.
All of that, thank you.
Yeah. Thanks so much. Let me know when you want to talk again. Okay.
We're on the annex building discussion.
Yeah, it's just been short and sweet. Just, there's a few people who asked me some questions when I was here this past week and I didn't have the answers. So I asked Melba if we had any information, just about availability of annexes and what it costs. I, I've never, I've never known. And then she did find something on the wall and it's kind of vague. It's just, and I guess it's, I just want to confirm it's still the same because I don't think it's been updated since the 80s, but I think it's $10 a day or 30 a month. Is that correct?
It should have been in our, can we, oh.
It's what's on the wall.
Sorry you guys weren't here. There was, I thought we had that in our fee schedule. Did we, we, we passed, we might check there to see, but I know that it was something like that, but it was in our, our fee schedule that we adopt every year at the.
Like a year and a half, two years.
Budget time?
Something like that.
Yeah, every year we update those, but I thought, I should, it should have been in there if it wasn't, that's where it should have been.
Just whatever was on the wall. But so I'm confused, who would pay $10 a day when they can pay a buck a day and just pay 30 for the month? And if somebody rents the annex for a month? And if somebody rents the annex for a month, does that mean no one else can use it? I mean, I really don't know. Anybody can use it?
I don't know what time, like, if they're, if they, like, have certain timeframes that other people are using it or whatever, I don't know, we've never had that.
Is there, because I don't-
No.
And were the hours, like twenty-four seven, or is it like, like morning to night?
Does it say what the hours are?
So I guess that's something maybe one'll revisit and so people know what the hours of availability is for the annex building. I don't think it's advertised much.
Yeah. Well, I, I think we definitely need to do some more-
Well, some have, and there's some answers, a little more in detail.
We can do some more, can you put that on next month's agenda to discuss just hours of operation and all that, so that it's fair for everybody?
So, so Nick, maybe you know, so when someone uses an annex building, do they have to have insurance so that the city's not liable if something weird happened or?
That's something we'd have to find out. I know that when they're currently using it, have insurance.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's just a question, Nick, it's just, it's just a question.
Yeah, we can, we can talk, we'll come on next month's agenda, we'll discuss the hours of operation and all that.
And one last thing, this was actually a message I received today that folks were concerned about, you have a major election coming up, and there's mirrors on the wall. I never really paid attention when I come in to vote, I really haven't. Do those get covered or?
The question stuff is pointed against the, no one sees.
Cynthia has done the elect, you've been there for-
I've seen mirrors. No, the mirrors are, because we sit there, the mirror's behind us-
Behind you.
And the voting booths are on the other side, so nobody can see anything, anybody votes, there's privacy.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Jim? Jim, you're up.
The killer shouldn't have to work so much, and then you could get some of this done, a lot of these. I'm Jim Smith, and I come for two reasons. And one of the reasons is the Smith acres, and the other is about the road on Old Main, the south end of it, whether it's going to, where the public is, the public part of that road is stopped, and the private road begins for the drive. The first part about it would be pretty easy, and there's no discussion needed to be about, but I am abandoning the Smith acres. There is a reason for it, and I don't want to go into it. Anyways, the next is the Riverview Drive, or not Riverview Drive, but Old Main, or there. There's plenty of reasons to state why that is a public road all the way to the intersection where, where Riverview Drive starts. The first one is, the first reason I have here is, I was in a situation with a neighbor, and we ended up having some litigation, and one of them was assigned a declaration from Dick Grosso stating where the end of Old Main is a public road. On the third page, there is a red line that Dick put in there stating that that's where he believed that the end of the public road was. The next declaration is one of Jeff Wohman, the previous mayor, and he also had an idea where it would be. And what he described was, they did a water project in two thousand thirteen or twelve or some, somewhere around that, in this, in that they said, yeah, maybe two thousand three and four. They did a water project, and during that time, on the end of Old Main, where the road is consistent paved all the way to one spot. On that picture dictates where the, there's only one spot where the asphalt has changed. And it is a solid strip of asphalt all the way from the northern end, all the way to this spot on that sixth page of this thing that you have. So this picture right here. So this is, the picture of that barn is Kathy's barn. And this is where the asphalt is the only places it changes from the, from the north end of Old Main, all the way to the south end, that's the only place that it changes. And that is where the water line project started, from there, down through my folks' place, down to the other end, and then down to Browning's Cut Stock. But anyway, so what he says is that they topped, resurfaced that road to make it sort of bring up to a standard of what it was. And that's what, in this document that he made, by the way I read it, he said, yes, we'll change that because that's the end of the public road, but we'll make it so that area is still good. Then later, then this page right here, do all of you guys have that? Does somebody have one?
What was it, which one is it, this one?
It's on the bird.
It's on the bird, yeah.
You have a loose sheet that would be there. So anyway, does anybody have that?
Yeah.
So what that says is, if you can kind of look at my, look right up at one of the glasses, it says, private road past this point. What that is, is Kathy's house and barn and intersection. And this is a map, if you go back, or if you go after that picture that I showed you of the asphalt, from, after the asphalt, the very next pages, it has the ordinances from what the city has, that they adopted this map made by Terry Golden Survey Company. So it is these pages right here. So in that, is where the ordinances were where the city adopted this map. And, and it also did say that it could change. This map was made in two thousand thirteen, and it was adopted again in two thousand nineteen, that that was the map. And this map, all that is, is a little picture of a map that's right behind you. And also, on the entrance of the office in here, this map, it's an entirety, is there and that is laminated with that, with this marker on it stating that that is the end of the public road.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to call point of order now.
No, we're not talking about that here, we're sitting down, I'm speaking.
Excuse me, point of order, I believe there has been a violation of the state law that must be addressed.
What violation?
The violation is there is no mention of Old Main Street Road validation on the agenda, because a petition for-
Kathy, it's not a hearing.
It doesn't matter, he's violating open meeting laws.
You have it called upon, file a grievance.
Okay, fine. To pursue it-
So anyway, this, this road comes to here, and it is, and it is accepted by the map that Terry made. And all these ordinances, twenty, two, twenty thirteen dash one, and the three pages of it, and when it was adopted, and when it was adopted, on March twelfth of two thousand thirteen. And then the next, so that's the ordinances where it came from, where I found where that map was adopted. And then is, in the June twentieth meeting, there was a film, or that was one of the zone meetings that was filmed. And in that film, on the second reel, about somewhere around minute four, there's a discussion being made without my attorney being there, but the meeting continued on even though he wasn't there.
He left.
Between Cynthia and Kathy about Old Main and about a road and a gate, and a gate that had to be close to keep the cows in. And I know, Dick, you know where it was because you used to farm out there. And I don't, all of us are farmer, are from a farming community, but we really don't all know how a cattle guard works.
Yeah.
But all a cattle guard is, is a way to stop cows, and if it doesn't stop cows, then you put a gate over the top of it, especially the old wooden ones. So after that ordinance one, the next thing we come to is this page one right here. And what that is, is a picture of a fence. And that fence is my fence, it's been there, and this fence was my grandma's fence, that my dad and I helped put in there. You can see by the top of the fence post that that fence wasn't just now put in, but it's been there. That's the beginning of one, and it's, and if you follow that fence line, it goes down and it goes to the back of Kathy's house, or it goes towards Kathy's house, if you can see her house pass a little bit. And then the page two is a little bit further down through the line, so you can see more of it. Page three, you can see where I wrapped the wire around there from reconstruction, that intersection, so the dirt would be out, so we were making that turnaround. But I didn't know when I was gonna bring cows back in, I didn't know everything was gonna take as long as it did, but I brought the wire, and all of this is just, all of this is just an indicator of where that fence was. Page four, now you can see Kathy's house, and you can see this fence, and you can see the top of that fence post, it's routed on the top of it, and that shows how long that fence, that fence has been there. The next, the next page I wanted to see, I don't know if you have it, but it's this page right here. And it has a cattle guard drawn on there, you see it? So where the cattle guard works, what I did was I, if, what I did was I stood at the fence, looked down to Kathy's house, and I made a, I made a visual spot on her house where I was looking at, then I turned around and made sure that everything was lined up. The way cattle guard works is the fence goes right to the end of it, and the other fence leaves the other end of it, so the cattle guard will actually stop cows. So where that was, if you see that fire hydrant on there, thirty-six feet from the fire hydrant back is where that fence would have came together. It would have intersected onto that cattle yard. And Cynthia said, when she went out to Nolan's, or Norrines, they had, used to have to go over the top of that cattle yard that was wooden, and they had to cross it, she said, but she didn't, in that meeting, she said she didn't know where it was.
Because it was just a dirt road, I mean, it was dirt.
Right.
No road, it was just dirt there.
Right, and it was right after the turnaround that ended at Kathy's house.
Turnaround.
Anyways.
No. No.
So the road for Jerry's lead, when you come up, his easement used to go on Old Main, it followed my grandma's driveway, around up past grandma's house, through the barnyard, to Jerry's house, or where they put their house, because they had a garden up there. And when I was hauling hay in, in the seventies, before I graduated high school, these people kept on driving through my grandma's yard, and I thought, why do they drive, drive through yards? And she said, that's their easement to get to their place. Well, then when grandma sold these other places, the first one was to Norrines, and that, and there, it was in July third of nineteen seventy-three, and that's when that fence was very first, or that's when the cattle guard was put in.
No.
So they could go through, and, so they could go through it and keep grandma's cows, because grandma used to have cows in there, and that's how they kept it in. If it was grandma's cows, it was getting out.
That is incorrect.
And then after that, then, the next thing, gather my thoughts and have some interruptions. But, so anyway, with Nolan's starting back then, then they built the road in, and it used to be that when Roe did the, when he did the surveying, if you go from their houses, come back outwards, so go to the very last page. The very last page, it's a, this, one second. Not the last page, I'm sorry. This one, this page right here. So what that's, the way that is, is number one, the drive, if you, I numbered the roads, number one goes to Matt Amblis, and it's going south. Number two is Riverview Drive. Number four is Old Main. Number three is my driveway. And number five is where I figured out to make it so that you have a turnaround. So during the road maintenance stuff that you guys have for the city to adopt, you have to have four inches or five inches of bulrock and six inches of three-quarter minus.
That's right.
Because if you have all three-quarter minus, it compacts better and doesn't corrode, and it never gets bulrock that comes up through it. So where that parking is, it's twelve inches thick of three-quarter crush, and that was part of the engineering that I heard that needed to be done to accept that parking lot. The parking lot's on a private road, it's past where the public road would be, but that's where the, that is where the garbage trucks turn around at, is on that piece. So the next thing I did was, I called the, the county, and I found out when it became mandatory for Lake Tahoe County to pick up garbage. And it was mandatory for them in nineteen ninety-five. And the reason was, because of all the garbage that was thrown around in the county, I don't know if you guys went on revenue roads other than around here, but towards Beery and Park, they have these big collection sites. And there was dumpster divers every place, garbage is being thrown every place to make it so they didn't have anymore. They said, we're gonna have garbage pickup on curbs, and there will be, they couldn't, the garbage company was owned by a private individual, they didn't want to go on private roads, they would only go on city roads.
That's not true.
Anyway, after that, after that, they started coming up and they put all these garbage cans in one spot at the corner, they would come up and use it, they would turn around in Kathy's driveway and come back with it.
So I worked for the garbage company, and when I worked for the garbage company, we weren't turning around there. We did go down private road roads. It was a service that the Lake Tahoe Sanitation owned by the Johnson family offered.
Right.
Yeah, so that was-
I was talking about the US private, but that-
That Johnson family is privately owned, it still is privately owned, but we did go down private lanes, because I actually went all the way to the end of that garbage truck many times.
When, when was that, you did that last?
I did it last in two thousand thirteen, this was my last work for the company, yeah, well, twenty, no, twenty-eleven, the service.
Do you know Eric and Amanda?
Twenty-eleven.
What's that got to do with anything?
But I'm just saying, but we did go down private roads. And my other question is, so this spot that you circled, we asked that if it was gonna become part of the city, that our engineer looked at it, so, and he didn't get a look at it, that we, so.
It doesn't, it doesn't need to be all that.
Well, I know, but when we were talking about it being part of the city road or whatever, so, I mean, I, yeah, but-
Well, just, just so you know what it is, but it's, it is a safe, sound turnaround spot for the trucks, but. So anyway, that is where my statement is as far as where the end of the public road is, and if you measured by what Gro's, what Gro's survey was, his, by what Terry's on that, on the maps it has circled through here that you guys have, not in, not on any of these maps, but other maps that you guys have received. Terry's map went eighty-six feet from the, from the fire hydrant to where the end of all the roads come to where their easement stops, and then that's where Roe sits, the public road. And that is pretty close to where that red line is. And that is pretty close to where that red line is on that, on that map. Wherever that red line is on the third page of this. And where Dick drew that line in there is really close to eighty-six feet. All it was is approximately forty foot up, but that's where it ends up actually.
Appreciate the presentation, Jim, but you've been relentless on this. I admire that in a way. And I do think, now, as your attorney, you did mention Cathy's name. I think she should have a right to talk at some point. But I would just like to talk to the public for a second. Imagine any of you are in a conflict with your neighbor, and you're about to go to court over it. And the city attorney tells the council, stay out of it. And the mayor gets involved and writes a letter for one side over the other. That is grotesquely inappropriate.
It's beyond appropriate, it's responsible now.
It's grotesquely inappropriate.
So we are all supposed to stay out of it, correct?
That's what the attorney said.
So there's other, other council members that have been caught hanging out with, and.
There have been. But it's grotesquely inappropriate, and we were instructed two attorneys ago, and the last attorney said, oh, and this is not in any way, to before me weighing in on what you presented today. There are brighter minds than me on that one. But that is grotesquely inappropriate.
You know, Jeff, too.
Well, I have a question for our city attorney. So are these affidavits null and void from our current mayor, Tom, and our former mayor? I mean, it's a serious assignment.
Well, okay. First, is the city attorney not the one that you were referring to?
Yes.
Current city attorney. What, what I can say is, no, what Dick says is what Dick said. He did not write it to bind the city, didn't have authority to bind the city. It is Dick's opinion, and it is Dick's opinion that is now recorded. The former mayor also gave his opinion, an affidavit is now recorded. They aren't null and void, nor are they binding on the city. And I'll, and I'll speak one step beyond what we're covering at this moment. When I, when I saw this on the agenda, I was a little intrigued and concerned, because I'm not sure what we're doing here with this. This is a topic that Jim has had in court with Cathy, and I understand that case is over. I understand your attorney is now not representing you. You've withdrawn the application for Smith, Smith Acres. The city's gonna have to, my understanding from, from one of, and I'm still trying to pick up some of the pieces here, but my understanding is the city at some point is gonna have to make a decision about where we believe the end of Old Main Street is.
That's the answer to your own question.
Well, I'm not certain it is. If, if, but if that's what this presentation is, then it's all wrong. We shouldn't have been holding this presentation. That is not what Jim asked to be on the, on the agenda to make a presentation. For what? It wasn't an action item, it wasn't something that you guys have been considering. It has been something that has been with planning and zoning committee. And I'm rather concerned we've been taking the time on it. And Cathy's objection was well taken, even though it's out of line. She's not a member of the council and wasn't the one to be raising that point of order. So it was well taken by me, I'm concerned about it. I'm not sure what the whole intent was other than for Jim to be able to talk to you and give you his, his unfiltered opinion, which is fine, he can do that. Not sure why we're doing it here today. So I've got some real concerns about why we just had this presentation.
Because Jimmy wants revenge on some stuff, and she's using Jim. He's his later, her latest victim.
Well, I, I, I have no test of belief, if that's right or wrong. So what I can tell you is, somebody asked for this beyond the agenda. Jim's here and give faith to make a presentation. He's given you what I believe is his understanding of everything. But you're gonna do nothing with it tonight, absolutely nothing. And if anybody asked you to do something with it, I would jump in with both feet and tell you, don't you dare. And so that, you've been given some information. If Cathy wants to do it now, she's gonna have to be given the same opportunity. When our, so planning and zoning committee comes to us with the recommendation on this, they're going to have to be able to, and then we're gonna do it all the right way. Tonight, we took some time to do it, we're trying, I, this, this community is a great community. You try to give time to everybody to be heard. And I think that's why we had this, this tonight. Other than that, don't you dare do anything with it, tonight, all right?
So can I ask a question?
It depends on the question.
So you, you did say that Cathy, is that, are we gonna give her the time tonight? Or are we gonna do that a different?
She's not on the agenda, she can't be done tonight.
But she, she can be, it's the same thing if she's.
I, I think it's the only, the only fair thing. I'm uncomfortable doing it, but I think it's the only way to, to correct where we are. I, at some point, there probably is gonna have to be a public hearing, and you guys are gonna have to make some decisions. But we're kinda taking information at this point. I, I may, I may, Cathy, I may change that opinion down the road. I've gotta look at it, because I'm, I really am uncomfortable where we are now.
And we did create a process for validation. I sent that to you as well.
That is still supposedly on the table. If that's off the table, then we need to, it goes back to planning and zoning.
The validation, I think, was for Smith Acres.
No, it was for the roads, the road validation.
I can tell you, I keep gathering information on this, and I'm tr, I, I pick up one can of worms and try to sort it, and then I get another can of worms, and then another one. Getting this thing, so it's a coherent question and facts coming to me is very difficult. And, and so I'm, I'm floundering a little bit. I'm giving you guys really good, solid advice. I'm telling you, it's, it is a can, it's several cans of worms that we're dealing with. Fortunately, one has been removed. I've just gotta sort those worms out now.
That's all. But in all reality, and I appreciate your wisdom and your guidance. We're lucky to have you. In all reality, the council created a process for road validation. It was.
Okay, I haven't seen that. So when we're done tonight, I'm gonna talk to you some more about that, because that will be very helpful for me.
But council.
Well, no, but you're the one that's pointing to it. I'm not gonna bring these guys into a violation of public meeting by having all of them meet with me. I'm gonna talk to you, who knows where you are.
Fair enough.
All right, so, thank you.
I just, can I say one thing?
You're on council, you're.
Okay, so this has been going on for thirty-six months. I think it's embarrassing, and it's ridiculous, it's becoming redundant. I mean, yeah, the planning, I've been to these meetings. See, Jim and Cathy get pushed to P and Z. Then they get pushed to city council, they get pushed to P and Z. I've gone back and forth. We have a member here who could say a whole lot of things. This is just, the buck needs to stop right here. This is, this is just ridiculous. When are we gonna make this decision?
Well, we can't make it tonight because it's an artificial thing.
Yeah, well, thirty-six months, people better start thinking really hard.
All right, Cynthia, you're up.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, the main thing that I wanted to comment, the thing is, and it's excellent. I just wanted to make sure it's in the record that we did meet on June twentieth on the recommendations that you were sent back to us, and they did not meet the requirements. So, did you get a copy of the letter? It was several pages long. But they, they did not. So one thing also, you might, we need to talk about this. The Old Main was not a consideration for the Smith Acres. Those kept, they were brought in. We do have to remember that back when the, is it called cable? It was being put in for the cable TV along that road because it could fall in some of it. That Wendy was trying to find out who owned that road, whether it was a city road or a private road. And she could not find any evidence that it was a city road. And I have been going through the city records, the minutes, and the city council meetings and the ordinances, and compiling a list of what's going on there. And I haven't found any evidence, I haven't finished. There may be some evidence there, but so far I haven't. And when I went to county courthouse, I was looking at the records, the maps up there. I haven't found a record showing anything there. Wendy had called up to the courthouse and had them look, and they didn't find. And there's still more to be looked at. But I haven't found out, for instance, where to be called, called Old Main. So I don't know, it was originally, I did find, let's see. Back in eighteen ninety-two, the first reference to things like, when the city was formed. And it was shortly after, in December of eighteen ninety-two, there was a petition of Aldrich, who owned the land on either side of Old Main at that point. The petition of Aldrich was approved for granting him the privilege to open a street to connect with Main Street from his addition, providing he pay damages incurred by the helping of said street. Back in eighteen ninety-two, there was a Main Street that was not connected to that. And then in December, a little later in December, Aldrich's petition again, asking for the removal of certain obstructions in the highway leading into the Main Street of his addition. It was right, now, he started calling it the Main Street of his addition. That may be where the Old Main, Old Main Street came from. Not that it was part of Old Main, but it was the Main Street of his addition. The council decided to get legal advice regarding the same. Then in January of eighteen ninety-three, the chairman reported on Aldrich's petition, saying the city was not compelled to take any action on the same. And if it was a public street at that point, the city would, I should think, be required to take obstructions removed. So so far, you know, I'm still looking to find information so I know just what it is, but that's what I've found so far, yes?
I have to ask you, on May, just so I can understand, a few moments ago, you said, and I've heard you say it at other meetings, that you're not sure if it is on a city road.
Yes.
Are you referring to like where Cathy's address is and where Jim's address is?
Yeah, Old Main.
So what is confusing to me is that for thirty-six months, that single question hasn't been answered, and I was able to answer it with a single phone call this week.
Okay, what did you get for answer?
It is a city road, and the city limits. I got it from both Amanda, and I got it from Erica, the auditor's office and the prosecuting attorney's office, along with Julie Frye. And they have what's called a road book. Excuse me, I apologize, the county clerk's office, sorry, it's too many names.
The justice office.
Well, it doesn't, they have a road book.
Yes, I know, I have, I've just gone through it.
Yep.
Did they get it, did they have anything in it?
An absolute, I have an email.
And when Wendy went through it, she, they called them, they confirmed.
Said they, I'm just sharing with you. What I've been told, took me one phone call.
When did, well, Wendy called up, and I don't know if they give a book.
Julie Frye owns the.
I know Julie too.
Yeah.
But where, when did they say it became a county road? That's what I have to know.
I did not ask that, not a county road, but it's a city road.
Yeah, I mean, from a city.
Yeah.
It became a city road when?
Yeah, I didn't ask that question, because what matters is what it is today. And I also asked, solid waste, you know, solid waste department? I asked about those trash cans in that photo. And they said that, yes, they do service all dwellings on private roads. They do offer waste service. But their waste receptacles have to be on the border of that private road, and in public road, city road, and on county road. So according to the pictures. Well, that's it. So if the trash cans are sitting where they are today, is that not the boundary?
Those trash cans, every one of them were sitting on my property in front of my barn before they were moved there, all of them.
I don't care about before, I care about now.
No, we're talking right before they were, where they are now.
Anyway, that's what's going to be, is that those trash cans were sitting on the border.
Order of order, order of order.
I'd like to say something to the public too about something. You know, this has been pointed out, that this has been going on and on. Jim, who has every right to pursue every legal meeting to develop, Cathy has every right to defend what she believes is her legal property. Cynthia has no skin in the game other than to just do the right thing and serve the community. And I want everyone to respect her for that, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I got a problem with that.
They have a part order.
Because of what Cynthia told me.
Let's move on.
Move on. Dustin?
Boy, I believe you.
Come back next time.
I say, free cookies.
The meeting is, so I'll keep this as short as I can. Joe and I finished our lead copper survey for Steve Julia. It's taken us a very long time and tons of hours to get it done. We have not found one lead water line in Julia, which is. So thank you to everybody that filled out the surveys and helped us get it all filled out. There may be some follow-up in a year to go, send out word.
Thanks, Amanda.
Yes.
That's cool, that's cool.
The fire hydrant at the store, we're repairing that again. It's the third time it's been dug up. It got hit last fall by a car, and it was leaking again. You have to be prepared, so it's dug up, it's gonna be dug up for a couple days. We'll order the parts, and hopefully it's to be fixed to the nth degree, because Joe is very good at this, and it will be done. We're gonna put there. Ty wanted me to tell everyone at the city council meeting and at the public that the lights for the baseball field will be in in the next two weeks. So he is thrilled, he has a whole crew set up to install all the lights, equipment. I offered him the city dump truck, the city backhoe, he doesn't need it, he's already got all that. He did ask if the city would pay for the electrical permit. Their contractor will pull it, but he was asking the city if they would pay for it. He thought it might be around five hundred dollars, he didn't know. And I said I would bring it up, and he could come to the meeting as well, remember meeting and explain. But he thought this process was gonna get going right away, so he wanted to. And finally, the last thing is, I had Melma contact the Palouse Humane Society. We have three dogs in town that are causing serious issues. It was just brought to my attention two weeks ago, but they've been on the loose for over a month. And also, we have a furrow cat problem on the call. There's inbreeding wild cats everywhere up there. So I've been putting out questions to everybody, and we've called. And basically, Aaron, who works at the library, suggested that the city contract with the Palouse Humane Society.
Yeah.
What that does is if we give them a one-time donation every year, let's say five hundred dollars, I don't know how much or how little, then they will guarantee us a spot. If Joe or I or the sheriff catches a dog, or, they don't take cats, but they take a dog, they will take it in and deal with it. And we don't have to provide our own shelter or anything. I have caught a dog once before in Julia and taken it up there, and they refused it. And I basically just said, well, I'm leaving it in the parking lot then, and took it. But I don't want to have to do that again. So this letter can be forwarded to all city council, and it talks about, I just wanted to say, she says, that she has some questions, and she says, we currently do not have any contract agreements with the rural towns and cities of the county. We do however have an agreement with Leighton County for our services for dogs, and an agreement with the city of Moscow for dogs within city limits. We take in stray abused by-dogs from Leighton County Sheriff's Office from time to time, as well as stray dogs from community members of the county. And she said, Leighton County provides us with an annual allocation to care for the dogs we take in from the county, but generally, it does not cover the total costs incurred from the dogs we care for. So if it's okay, I'd like to follow up and just check into it, because I've witnessed rage from neighbors, serious rage, and I didn't realize it was going on. And it's because the dogs are digging up under people's fences. The sheriff, which I'm sure this person can attest, has been called over five times on one dog alone. And it keeps, they keep letting it out, and so, anyway, that's all I have. Oh, Connie, do you have a question?
Are those dogs not claimed by anybody, they're just dumped here?
Um, no, those dogs actually belong to owners in town. And they, they have acknowledged that they get out. One broke through a camper window, they were trying to house it in a camper, so it wouldn't get away, and it broke through the window and got out. It's tried by Joe and his son when they were reading meters, so.
Well, what I was wondering is, there's no place that you house them for three days or three minutes, and then charge them X amount of dollars to take them, to get them back?
For a while, one day, but we don't have a place here.
I just wanted to know, is it fine for?
We have a city dog ordinance, says, how come we don't enforce our own ordinances and start giving these tickets out for all these accidents?
So I think they have been cited twice, if I'm not mistaken. But they're still getting it.
Well, I'm terrified of dogs on the loose, I have a young daughter. I think Justin should do whatever it takes to maintain that, and I appreciate you doing that.
Yeah, it's just an idea, and it sounded like it would be humane and sort of take the pressure off the city, I was like, take it back there.
Isn't it an appeal to?
Uh, the Palouse Humane Society, I believe so.
Give me.
I'll, I'll find out, Rita, I'll find out.
Okay. I, I just, I just wanna know what that statue was. You said it so fast, earlier, what the reference was.
It's seven four two oh four C, it's one that we've used.
Oh, yeah, I know it, I know it. Okay, thank you. I don't have anything.
I just wanna say thank you to you guys coming. I just wanna say thank you to you guys coming, and, because we have a lot of empty seats sometimes, reminding us not only who we serve, but also why we do it, so thank you guys very much.
Cindy, Carrie.
Uh, just a couple things I wanted to let you guys know real quick. I sent you guys the CD renewals today. One of them we missed, we do have another one coming up. They automatically renew, so at this point, I didn't know what your guys' thoughts were, if you guys were interested, because financially, we're fine. We don't need them, so for them to continue to accrue interest is always a really positive thing. So, at this point, I wasn't gonna take any action on them until we learn more going on down the road. I have training next week, Melva and I do. So we will be gone from the fourteenth through the seventeenth.
Are you able to help out, Melva?
Um, if you guys would like me to, I can keep the office open in the mornings. You, everybody guys can ask me to do that, or?
Yeah. Yeah, if we can do that, that'd be great.
And then, the one big news, and Justin, I can't, might bring, I didn't write it down, and I just thought of it, and I needed to tell, is it LTAC?
Oh, L, yeah, LTAC, yeah.
So, we were in a little bit of a panic, but everything worked out really well, and we were approved, and we will be receiving a hundred thousand dollars for the chips and program that we did two years ago.
Yay.